Good evening. I'd like to call the March Work Session to Order. Welcome to our meeting. The time is now seven o'clock. Please join me for a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Superintendent Fury, I do believe we have special recognition tonight.
Madam Chair, we do indeed. Tonight, we have invited several talented elementary school students who recently won awards at the Griffin RISA Regional Literacy Days Competition. These students were champions in the district competition and as a result, earned the opportunity to represent Newton County Schools in the regional contest. Our students won so many awards at the literacy days competition that we had to separate the recognition into two nines. Next week, we'll recognize our middle school winners. The literacy day festival is comprised of several competitions, including recitation, ready writing, and drama. Our first student won first place honors in the third grade poetry recitation competition. Would Ella Burton please come forward to accept her certificate of recognition? And Ella is not here, but let me tell you a little bit about Ella. Ella is a third grade student at Heard-Mixon Elementary School, and she won top honors with her performance of the poem "Sarah Cynthia Sylvia Stout Would Not Take the Garbage Out." Congratulations Ella on a job well done. Next, I'd like to call Sarah Smallwood to please come forward. Sarah is a fifth grade student at Mansfield Elementary School, and she won top honors in the fifth grade ready writing competition. Congratulations Sarah on your outstanding accomplishment. I'd also like to recognize the Live Oak Elementary School's drama team members for their outstanding performance of Charlotte's Web. We'll recognize each drama team participant individually, so students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Courtney Graham. Courtney is a fifth grade... Courtney doesn't like all of the love that we're showing, huh Courtney? And you can take your mask down too Courtney, there you go. What, you gotta get what?
This is why Courtney wanted a drama.
There you go. Let me tell you a little bit about Courtney. She's a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Congratulations Courtney. And we love hashtag love is love, that's what she has on her sweatshirt. Roman McCormick. Roman is a fourth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School, and congratulations to Roman, and you probably want to pull your mask down, that we can get your lovely face. Awesome. Congratulations. Next, Mason Perry-Predy. Mason is a fourth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Well done Mason. Love that smile. Oh, show those teeth again, that was awesome. Good job Mason. Carson Randall does... Oh Carson, great. Carson Randall is in the fifth grade at Live Oak Elementary School. Congratulations Carson. And you probably want to pull your mask on down. There you go. See your pretty face. Congratulations. Leila Smith. Leila is a fifth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Well done Leila. Jai VC. Jai is a fourth grade student at Live Oak Elementary School. Congratulations Jai. Beautiful smile. Love that smile. Okay, and Xander Wheeler. He is not here. Xander is in the fourth grade at Live Oak, and we'd just like to say well done to Xander as well. Nilani Jones. Nilani is in the fifth grade at Live Oak. Congratulations Nilani. Very nice. We also had a drama team student who was unable to attend this evening's meeting, and that student is Rakaya Allen, who is a fifth grade student at Live Oak as well, and we'd like to congratulate her in her absence, so congratulations to Rakaya. We definitely want to congratulate each of these students on a job well done. Our recitation contest participants and drama team members not only had to memorize lines from a poem or script, but they also had to perform them in front of an audience that was quite large. That's definitely not an easy task, nor is it easy to write immediately after being given a prompt for a timed assignment. Just like imagine walking into the room and someone just says, "Write this," and then you've got the time to do it. So it's quite incredible to have someone who is able to do that as well. These students flourished in those situations, and keep in mind that it was a regional competition, so they were competing with school district champions from Butts, Fayette, Henry, Lamar, Pike, Spalding, and Upson Counties. I'm so very proud of them for representing their schools and our school districts so well, and I know that our board members are as well. I'd also like to take a quick moment to recognize the principals who are here this evening. That would be Ms. Wilkins, and she was out the door just a second ago, but she was here to recognize her student, Mr. Chris Haymore, principal at Mansfield Elementary, and Dr. Tiffany Richardson, also at Live Oak Elementary School. We are just incredibly proud of our principals for creating the conditions for our kids to be able to flourish. It seems like we have someone joining us, so we want to make sure that we recognize her as well, so if you'll all give us just a second here. Okay, so let me go back so I can properly recognize Ella Burton. So Ella, would you please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mrs. Henderson Baker, who is our board chair? Ella is a third grade student at Heard-Mixon Elementary School, and she won top honors with the performance of the poem "Sarah Cynthia Sylvia Stout Would Not Take the Garbage Out." Congratulations Ella on a job well done. Then we'd like Xander Wheeler to come forward. Xander is a student at Live Oak Elementary School, and he is in the fourth grade. Well done Xander, we are proud. Pardon me? He was part... Yes, sorry. Xander was part of the drama team at Live Oak. So again, as I was saying, as we close out our recognition portion of the board meeting, we are incredibly proud of our students to be able to do the things that they do in the midst of the trials and tribulations of the times. I mean, we're still struggling and have struggled all year long in a pandemic-type setting, but our kids are resilient, and they're strong, and they're smart, and they're able, and they're beautiful. And so, we really appreciate the support that our parents and families provide, but even more so, we're just so incredibly proud of our kids. So thank you so much for being here tonight.
On behalf of the board, we echo what Mrs. Fury has just stated. We want to thank the families and little future thespians and our poets. Tonight, we definitely saw some future thespians, as many of you like got up from your chair and stuff. Some of you guys gonna be Emmy Award winners. So thank you guys for coming out. Being that this is a school night, y'all packing up already. If you would like to leave the meeting, you can do so now and take pictures outside of our boardroom. We're gonna have to go ahead and carry on with the work of the board. You are more than welcome to stay if you want to see policy stuff and operational stuff. Okay, I see a parent waving goodbye. But you are free to leave. Thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you so much. Do you want us to get out of the picture? No? Okay.
You want us to... Can you get all five or six of us? I forgot.
Forget about me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, indeed. Good job.
That's a tongue twister.
That's a hard one to do. Oh, the student, not me. Oh yeah, I would love for her to be able to do it. No, that would be horrible.
Right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, it's been moved to second, all in favor? Ms. Guthrie, we didn't have public participation, correct? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. May I have a second, please? Second by Mrs. Coggins, all in favor? Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Thomas.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, Board Members, the financial report is as follows. The special purpose local option for education tax, sales tax, ESPOS 5, distribution for January was $1,510,759, which is a decrease of $617 from the previous month.
Dr. Thomas, we might need to change your mic out right quick.
Thank you, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Do you need me to start over, or is it okay? All right. The average for the first 25 months of ESPOS 5 collection is $1,484,683. The monthly average for ESPOS 4 was $1,8,482. The title avalanche tax collection for January was $502,161. Expenditures are within budget with 62.07% of the funds expended and 66.67% of the year complete. And the February 2020 board financials are there for your review. This concludes the financial report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on the financial report? Okay, strategic plan?
Well, this evening, I want to present some highlights from the superintendent's report in the area of student achievement and success. Fifteen Newton County School System High School students have been named semifinalists for the 2022 Governors' Honors Program. The Governors' Honors Program is a residential summer program held at Berry College in Rome, Georgia, from June 19th through July 16th, 2022, for gifted and talented high school students who are rising juniors and seniors. The program offers instruction that is significantly different from the typical high school classroom. It is designed to provide students with academic, cultural, and social enrichment necessary to become the next generation of global critical thinkers, innovators, and leaders. In the area of high-quality workforce, the elementary curriculum and instruction department's staff focused on the strategy of summarizing during the month of February. Three videos were distributed during the month that focused on summarizing strategies that teachers can use in their classrooms with their students. Summarizing by the teacher and students should happen throughout the lesson and can be used as a formative assessment to assist the teacher's instruction. In the area of culture, climate, and communication, the Anti-Defamation League recognized the Newton County School System for its dedication and commitment to No Place For Hate. On February the 11th, 2022, the Anti-Defamation League sent a camera crew to Alcovee High School to interview and capture footage of students and staff implementing No Place For Hate. Special thanks to the school counselor, Sonya Henderson, the school climate specialist, Tiffany Dean, and the students who participated in this process. And lastly, in the area of organizational and operational effectiveness, during the month of February, the technology department's staff deployed 209 Promethean Active Panels to Cousins Middle School, Clements Middle School, Liberty Middle School, Mainstay, and the Newton County Theme School. The instructional technology specialists and digital learning coaches conducted introductory and preliminary training sessions to familiarize teachers with the new interactive panels. Madam Superintendent, this concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Are there any questions about the strategic plan report? Okay, having none, you can proceed to enrollment report.
Okay. The enrollment report, as of March 2nd, 2022, we had 18,752 students, which is an increase of 34 students over last year's enrollment during this particular time. This concludes the enrollment report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Any questions about the enrollment report? Okay, having none, we don't have any old business. I'll move on to new business. The only item up under new business as a reminder that needs action tonight is G. Okay, we'll start with item A.
Item A, the superintendent recommends the purchase of educational support resources from Carson Delosa Education of Dallas, Texas. The total cost is $252,240. Details and background, summer bridge activities are designed to help students review the essential skills of their current grade level and prepare them for the next grade level. Students will engage with both familiar and new content, so that, in addition to maintaining already acquired knowledge, they will become better equipped to encounter and process new material when it's presented to them the following school year. The resources provided will continue the learning process throughout the summer, engaging students, parents, and families. This item is related to strategic goal Area 1, student achievement and success. The purchasing documentation is there for your review, and the funding source is FY22 Title I Funds. This concludes... Oh, this item is ready for your review. Item A.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Are there any questions about item A? Okay, having none, you can proceed to B.
Item B, the superintendent recommends the Chromebook Refresh Services needed for the school system be purchased from Lexicon Technologies of Conyers, Georgia. The total cost will be $51,000. Details and background, the school system has invested in Dell Chromebooks as a part of its one-to-one technology initiative. These tools require maintenance and repair to keep them in top operating condition. To help achieve this goal, the technology department will be supported by Lexicon Technologies. They will provide summer refresh services on these machines being turned back in as students leave the system for whatever reason, and these services will help keep them in optimum shape and allow them to be redistributed to new students for the upcoming school year. This item relates to strategic goal Area 1 and 4. The purchasing documentation is attached, and the funding source is SIR 2 Funds. This item B, well, I've just presented item B for your review.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Any questions or comments on B?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Well, Dr. Fial is here.
The cost of $51,000, how is this generated? Is it...
Sorry about that. How is this generated? Based on how you develop that? If a student bring a machine in, it's got to need some repair. The $51,000 don't cover every machine coming in. How is that cost associated with the 51?
That quantity, that dollar amount is based on the total number of devices that we are giving the company, so it's, I believe, it's 8,000.
6,000.
6,000 new devices.
Sorry.
That they will be repairing for us, so they will say those devices clean. They kind of, they've done this across the state, so they kind of know about how many screens, keyboards, and various things they'll have to repair based on the quantity that we're providing for them, so they've kind of done the math on the back end, and so based on what we're giving them to repair, that's what they kind of factor that cost will be for any repairs or need for the devices that we are sending over to them.
Do you think this is adequate?
Yes.
I'd have a question. That's not the way I understood it. I'm sorry, were you finished?
Go ahead, I'll chime in.
This isn't for any repair, really? This is just for cleaning, like wiping, starting, refreshing the software?
They'll clean them at any level of maintenance, similar to like when you go and get your oil changed in your car, and they kind of take it, and they'll go, hey, they'll also like clean filters and various things that need to be done. So some of the maintenance that when you need to get the devices back up and running, they'll take care of those during that process as well.
Okay, physical stuff on the machines? Okay. So the follow-up question was, why only 6,000? Is that all we're anticipating? Like 6,000 out of 18,000, 19,000 machines?
Right, this is for the devices that were actually deployed and that they're going home with students. So right now, we have our middle and high school students that have been taking those devices home back and forth.
Gotcha.
So those will be the ones that will be, will be taken care of. And this is also factoring in the ones that are being collected, because we still have some devices that students will possibly keep during the summer, because they'll be doing various summer programs. So we've kind of done the math, figured out it'll be approximately 6,000 devices that will be needing services for.
Okay, great, thanks.
I still have some concern, the number of devices that got to be handled, and I'm assuming this company will do that, perform that activity. Now, when you say it's cleaning, I can understand, a computer come in, it has to be cleaned, and that's about all. If a keyboard, if you need a keyboard to be changed, or key points in, it's additional work, it could take a couple hours to change that, fix that. That's not part of the 51 that you're talking about.
They will handle some of the repairs on those devices. If they are out of the scope of the work, we'll be notified of those devices that are outside of the scope of work. Most of the devices that they will be taking care of are under warranty, and so based on the relationship, based on our partnership with Dell, they'll be able to get those parts and provide those services as a part of this. So the right devices that are under warranty, that are damaged, they will be able to repair those for us as well.
Okay, good luck, and thank you.
Dr. Fial, I do have a question. Were you done?
It just seems, the contract was different, because it was a per computer rate, 8.50, 8.25, whatever it was, per computer. Obviously, if something's broken, it costs more than $8. They're going to physically touch 6,000 of these machines for $8 a machine, and if anything's broken, it just, I'm with you, it's just like 51,000, that's all it's going to cost to, that's just them touching it?
Right. They're touching it, and if it's within that scope of work that they can take care of, they'll take care of that. We have other options for...
Devices that are damaged outside of that scope.
Okay, all right.
I have a question, because I know this is relating to devices at the end of the year, but do we have any devices like mid-year, maybe seniors who are finishing out early, or seniors doing dual enrollment that no longer need like the laptop that we have given them? I just want to know if there are, do we incorporate, including the Career Academy students, as being able to wipe them clean? Because I know they did that for the refurbished computers they were giving out.
Sorry, can I ask that one more time? I want to make sure I'm answering that question correctly.
So if we have students that are in mid-year, right, and so they need to turn the device back, so let's say they're, you know, because somebody might say, well, why were they in mid-year? So they're becoming a dual enrollment student, and perhaps they're finished with all classes, Newton County School System classes. And so, because this is for end of the year, wiping clean, we couldn't utilize students. But for those devices, are we able to utilize the students over at the Career Academy in the computer program? Because they do wipe, remember, they have that refurbish program, and they do wipe those computers clean.
Yeah, normally for our students that we have mid-year, we take care of those, the quantity of those devices are low enough where we handle those internally. So we take care of any students, because every day, basically, we are reassigning devices to students based on withdrawals or transfer from site to site in our secondary building. So we handle those internally. It just would be too much for us to handle during the summer, to handle all the devices that we'd be, that we're collecting at the end of the school year. So we already have a system in place to kind of handle those devices that are collected throughout the school year.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were including our students that are in programs, so they're getting hands-on experience. So if there is an opportunity for them to have hands-on experience, let's include them as well.
Yeah, we've actually just started, we have our technology intern that we've been working with, one of our, our Coe students, so.
Okay, perfect.
Does excellent work for us.
Perfect, that's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Well, excuse me, I have another question, you're standing up too long.
I keep trying to get out of here.
We may be there, but reassure me, when will we get to a true one-to-one?
All right, I'll ask a follow-up question before I can answer that. We are at a true one-to-one, so I would want to say, what is, how are you defining a true one-to-one?
Let me, before I answer that question, let me ask you another question. How many students do we have in the system?
I believe we have like 18,000.
18,752.
And how many machines do we have?
We actually have about 23,000 devices.
About 23,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, you answered my question.
Any more questions for Dr. Fial? Okay, you can, you have a seat now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item A, we'll need approval to next week. Item B, well, I mean, not B, I'm sorry, item C.
Item C, the superintendent recommends the food and milk needed for the school system be purchased from Gordon Food Service of Lithia Springs, Georgia, Samples Foods of Atlanta, Georgia, Bimbo Bakeries USA of Atlanta, Georgia, and Mayfield Dairy Farms LLC of Athens, Tennessee. The total estimated cost is $1,425,000. Details and background, for the FY 2022 year, program participation has increased by approximately 12%. Additionally, based on Consumer Price Index data, the cost of food items through February 2022 has risen by approximately 4.3%. Consequently, the school system needs to allocate additional funds to cover the remainder of the physical year. The school system will utilize established contracts previously reviewed and approved by the board during the current physical year. Items and costs are represented in the table below. This board item is related to strategic goal Area 4. The purchasing documentation is attached, and the funding source is FY22 School Nutrition Program. And so here is item C, Madam Superintendent, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. That's one thing we don't consider, we don't think about, you know, as our food prices go up, that means the school system food prices go up as well. Any questions about item C? 4.3%.
That's, that's an add-on for this year, right? This isn't for, so this is just to finish the year, and we'll decide on this next week, but.
We gotta feed them.
So we can't buy a cow or something?
They're cheap. They're cheap.
You got some, don't you?
Yeah, they're cheap.
We gotta feed them, okay.
We gotta feed them, okay.
I know, we just, we just talked about fifty-one thousand dollars for computers cleaning and now we got one point four two five million that we have to budget because of increasing prices. So I do have a question on the funding though. Are meals not still being covered? I mean, but.
They're reimbursable, so yes, once, once we, once the meals are purchased then the School Nutrition Team submits reimbursables, so they send it, send it back to us, which is why you'll notice that the funding sources there, School Nutrition Funds, the program funds. So that's where it draws from.
So, but we're not increasing, there's no cost. I mean, we're not increasing the price to anybody because it's still free to charge. So we're absorbing the cost is what I'm at. But I thought there was money coming from the state or federal to help pay.
There is, and everybody in the district gets free breakfast and free lunch through June thirtieth. And so what, but the way that it operates is they don't give you the funding until the meal is sold. Or not sold, delivered. And so, once they get the meal delivered, they do a count and then they submit for reimbursement. So what's happened is the prices have gone up, but also participation rate has gone up as well. So there's a need for additional, for them to bring forward more than what they budgeted because of those reasons.
So.
But Superintendent Fury, we want to be careful with telling, because Trey asked about, so it's not an increase in price to anybody because yearly we do have an increase in price of lunches.
Right, not this year though, because everything is free, so.
My parents saying, y'all said y'all wouldn't go.
Yeah. Well, for this year, through June thirtieth, breakfast and lunch are free to everyone. And so there's not an increased price to the consumer.
Right.
All right, but there is an increased price to us through our purchasing.
So I'm just saying for the funding source, it's our nutrition program funds.
Correct.
But those funds aren't coming out of the general budget, they're gonna come out of like the state reimbursements?
Correct, yes. You have to remember that the School Nutrition Program is its own enterprise entity. So they are wholly funded by themselves. The general fund dollars unless, so the, they, money can go back and forth, but they fund themselves through the, through the reimbursables. And then when meals are no longer, that they have to be charged for meals, then those dollars support their program.
Right, okay. Thank you.
In reality, I guess, I probably confuse it more, but we're increasing the amount that we need for operation funds. We're not increasing the meal. We're increasing these prices for operating funds.
We're gonna spend that much more.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Out of the School Nutrition Program for the reimbursables that they're getting back from the federal government. So when they, when the meal is, when a student comes to get a meal, that is recorded. And then the School Nutrition Team sends that to the state and then to the government to refund the cost of that meal to the district. But it's, it's in arrears because they don't pay you before you get, before you deliver the meal.
Well, they're still operating funds.
Yes.
We need to improve the life of funds.
Correct, that's what they're asking for.
Trying to give a simple explanation.
We will spend one point four two five, the government will reimburse us for one point four two five.
Yes.
Yes.
Got you, all right.
Any other questions on item C? Okay, on item D, and you guys forgive me, I logged out of my computer and I'm about to lock up my agenda, so I'm having to go back and forth on my phone, so I'm not on my cell phone, my agenda. My password is automatically on here, but it's not set up on my laptop, so I've locked myself out on there. So, so I'm sitting here like this, so forgive me. Item D?
Item D, the superintendent recommends the contracts for painting services at select schools be awarded to A and D Painting Incorporated of Tucker, Georgia, and Ideas Painting LLC of Lawrenceville, Georgia. The total cost is one hundred and eight thousand dollars. Details, invitation for bids for a contract for painting services at select schools was open February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. The schools include Livingston Elementary School, Herd-Mixon Elementary School, and Mansfield Elementary School. The project consists of painting in both the interior and exterior of the buildings, including the gymnasiums, as well as pressure washing exterior building surfaces, including canopies, columns, and sidewalks. The winning vendor and their prices are presented in the table below. This item is related to strategic goal Area Four. The contract documentation is attached and the funding source is FY twenty-two and upon approval FY twenty-three General Funds. Madam Chair, this is board item D.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about D?
I, well, I've got to get, one second please, I apologize.
While he's looking it up, I'll just add, and I know Dr. Barr's not here for this, but I was looking through the vendor list, those who participated. They just want to make sure we're still, I know at one point we reached out to local vendors trying to keep some of this stuff work local, I mean, without being, without showing some sort of partiality, but, you know, advertising to local vendors, making sure, I mean, as much people, as much work is out there right now, I know prices have gone up, things like that, but I would still like to see us reach out to our local vendors and subcontractors and construction companies and all these things to, to give them a shot at these, these type opportunities. Just making that statement again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Johnson?
No, go ahead, I'll pass.
Okay. Any more questions or comments for item D? Okay, item E?
Item E, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for grounds and athletic field care and maintenance awarded to Brightview Landscape Services, Services Incorporated of Forest Park, Georgia, be renewed for another term. The effective date will be March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, and the expiration date will be March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The estimated contract value is eight hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars. This item is related to goal Area Four and the contract documentation is attached and the funding source is FY twenty-two and upon approval FY twenty-three General Funds.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Thomas on E?
I have a question, but I don't think it's fair to ask Dr. Thomas, I'll wait until next week.
Appreciate that. No, but I can take your question if you want me to share with Dr. Barr.
I'll deal with it offline.
Okay.
And just to let those in the audience and that are watching know, Dr. Barr is out, so Dr. Thomas is filling in. And so that is why Dr. Thomas may not know the answer to it as that is not her area of expertise, but you're doing a phenomenal job of filling in, so we appreciate it. So Dr. Barr, we have to wait on him to come back. Okay, all right. Item F?
Item F, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy D O. Madam Chair, this is board item F.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on item F? Okay, item G?
Item G, the superintendent recommends the approval of personnel matters as discussed in executive session. Madam Chair, this is board item G and this item requires board action this evening.
Okay, item G is the item that requires action. May I have a motion, please?
To move.
Okay.
Second.
It's being moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bailey. Okay, discussion.
I need to abstain from number five-five-three.
Okay, we have five-five-three for Ms. Coggan.
Eddie Johnson, eleven-oh-nine.
Eleven-oh-nine, Johnson.
Bailey, what, Trey Bailey, line two-five-two.
Two-five-two from Trey Bailey. And for myself, I need to abstain or recuse myself from eight-seven-two. Okay, and just in case those people are wondering, we are not calling out lottery numbers. I know a lot of your support is education, but item G pertains to employees and these are people that we know. So we need to abstain or recuse ourselves from voting on those people, okay? So we have five-five-three, Ms. Coggan, eleven-oh-nine, Mr. Johnson, two-five-two, Trey Bailey, and eight-seven-two for Henderson Baker. Okay? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, five-zero. All right, thank you. Other matters of interest?
No, yeah, I have one. For the people that didn't show up for the basketball game on Saturday night, you missed a win. Big one. We lost, but we're very proud of their participation and accomplishment.
Absolutely. Okay.
I was gonna say the same thing that Mr. Johnson said, just that the kids were amazing, outstanding, we're proud of them. We're proud of all of our student athletes. They've had many, many accomplishments over the course of the, the school year so far, and I expect there'll be many more to come. But across the system, our kids are just doing so phenomenally well, we're really proud of them.
Okay, awesome. Any other matters of interest? So outside of that, our dance program that just got established a few years ago has its first concert or showcase on its own. It had a showcase during the winter, but that was a combination of all arts. It is the dance program over at Newton High School. So you guys do come out Friday night, six or six-thirty. So just be there at six, just in case. I think it's six-thirty though. So be there at six. So come see what the students, how innately talented the students are and the phenomenal job that Ms. Evans have done over there with that program.
Six-thirty.
It's six-thirty? Okay, so y'all come at six, so y'all be on time. With that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, moved and second, moved by Ms. Coggan, second by Mr. Anderson Bailey, all in favor? Thank you, media adjourned, seven forty-two.
Maybe it's seven, because I put, I always put it on my calendar.